Good evening, and welcome to the June twentieth meeting of the Berington Planning Board. Restored Business is called to an order, will cause. John and Sutchi. Andy?
Napa.
Andy, am I?
Happy L O I, here.
We're going to, uh, John and Sutchi will be a full voting member tonight to place an app. And next we're going to review and approve minutes of June sixth, twenty twenty three. Just a note on the published. Need given this, uh, the date, so basically state should. Any discussion, comments, corrections? Hearing none.
I move that we accept the minutes from June sixth.
I'll second that.
Is it here?
Right, okay, we're staying.
Napa. Andy, am I?
Happy L O I.
Quick things for the board, um, on August fifteenth. Um, when I wanted to try to get, uh, start it, you can work on. Your ideas, um, if you have things, um, you want to work on, or you can send me an email. I know that there's some different things that people have wanted to work on, so I can try to have a draft of something. As far as the staff side, we know some discrepancies in our definitions, so we'll be asking the board to look at those. And that's it for that one. As announcement, Housing Chapter Subcommittee kickoff meeting, um, I know the subcommittee members are here tonight. They'll be hearing about their applications, but the kickoff meeting is will be officially the twenty sixth of June, from three to five. And so we will be, um, our consultant representing. And then, the following day, which is the Tuesday. The draft proposal review and subcommittee amendment, supplement section six, the town zoning unit. With the under six, um. Conservation Commission and the planning board members. That's all I have, unless there's any other questions.
Questions?
Who's on the subcommittee, or?
Um, I had, I think it's the last people. Um, right now I just had John, but, um, I can't remember if you were at the last, if you showed up to last, and they were able to make it. I saw the inviting was there last time, it was just like after John, and then. Since Ken is in the wheelchair, he said Doug will be there, and then Doug may have invited a couple other people from their end. But if you're interested, if you want to be present on board, I can send you the meeting notice.
Let me think about it.
Okay.
And five, class five and class six private road application. And six. Ninety-four month road. Here, few.
I'm still the applicant.
We get no comment from the, uh, or your general skills?
Um, categories, do you not get, um, departmental comments?
Okay. Okay.
It's a big garage. Nice workshop. Where's the workshop, downstairs or upstairs?
Any comments on this one, your units, everything look okay, or is there a motion to send a letter to the planning board?
We are the planning board.
I'm sorry.
Make a motion to send the. Letter to the planning board that we have reviewed it.
Second.
Napa.
Andy, am I?
I have happy L O I.
But here. That Mr. Kenneth?
They can hurt you.
Action items, item number six, doctor, was adopted in master plan. Vision chapter, land use chapter, and transportation.
Good preparedness, I'm SRPC here from. Draft of any comments, um, our host has never received any comment from those chapters, um. I don't, I don't think they've received any conference here tonight to vote and adopt, and you guys will look at that. Or if the board members have questions.
Anybody have any questions on those three chapters?
They just have to vote to adopt each one, and they do have the, uh, this notification of master plan doctor might pass around now or after the meeting for everybody to see.
Okay. Hey, the vision chapter, is there a motion to adopt that chapter?
Motion to adopt vision chapter.
Second to by me. Vote please.
Sutchi.
Napa. Andy, am I?
Happy L O I.
They get you out of here.
Motion to adopt land use chapter?
So I'll come off the sidelines.
Move that we adopt the land use, um, update chapter.
I'll second. Well, Jesse, second.
Sutchi.
Napa. Andy, am I?
Happy L O I.
Tashira. Yeah, let's go on. Presentation chapter, certainly. Oh, if not, I'll make that motion to adopt that chapter, seconded by.
I'll second.
Yes, if not, the peach. Put in for.
Whoa, 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 okay. Napa. Andy, am I?
Happy L O I.
Up here. And the, uh, please subcommittee members' application for housing chapter.
Um, with your chairman, yeah, so the housing chapter, thank you.
How does success?
Yeah, so we have, um, two, for the subcommittee, um, we have two planning board members, um, who are attending our housing academy. And we'll know John Dercel, enjoying the happy yellow, also the select board meeting, um, nominated thirty, part of also be as part of. Many. Since we already have our application file, um, we need to admit it, but we two, two applications to citizens tonight. So, um, I believe both of you have received those. I believe both of the gentlemen are here tonight, anybody want?
Oh, okay.
I'm not sure what I brought from the phone really soon, I know you like volunteers, so.
Are you asking me?
I know that the platforms have, you know, I see very.
We don't vote, right?
Not necessarily.
Thank you, members. If you are here, that is Mr. Gilbert Smith and Mr. Robert Cavalli.
I don't know if either one of you here would like to speak, you would want to volunteer.
You're in.
If not.
I had a question for Bob, just because you said you were available mostly nights, and it looks like this committee is going to meet from three to five in the afternoon.
Oh, they are, okay, I did not know that, okay.
Well, the dates are Monday and then July eleventh, is that the next one? Uh, is that what it says here in somewhere, July meeting to be.
On Monday afternoon.
Monday afternoon.
Yeah, is there? Yeah, but if there's a better time that works for you, um.
I got to work at three. So I could. I could probably on, how, how often are we meeting?
So, uh, the schedule also, have at the next meeting, I think there's about ten meeting, approximately ten meetings total. Um, uh, how do you really tell everybody will be able to make every meeting? Um, but if it's better for you to meet in the afternoon, we'd rather have, you know, volunteers that are able to make it. It just have work to last, housing business kind of just more than that, but.
I want to through the schedule, but, I mean, if we could do it like shift in an hour, would that work?
Like four to six?
Four to six, yeah. Cause I could, I could make it by four.
Everybody else?
You're always hired.
Did we actually meet ten times on those other ones?
I think so, yeah.
Item sixty, the July meeting will be held July eleventh, there's a motion to cancel the work session on July twenty fifth. I'll make that motion, I second that one.
Oh, this is planning board, not. Sutchi. Master.
Napa.
Okay.
Andy, am I?
Happy L O I.
Tashira. Just go on. Item number seven. It's, it's, I didn't send from our neighbors.
The D R I from, and not him.
Um, so you know, I need business far. But he has a chance to work it to look at it. You have a great lot, right, that's the only venue, that's all.
And it doesn't have a whole lot, because they're just building the building, there's no tenant, you don't know what's going in there, you got.
The town line is about nine hundred and sixty feet from the project area.
Kind of thing about surveying. I, I mean, it's interesting looking at the parcel that they were even able to get the original planning to go along, or permitting to build a building in there, because it's so wet.
Yep.
Based on the, the maps.
Okay.
Well, not for a water. Looking for water.
Yeah. I think all the questions for the, we don't have the pens on. So.
Oh, yeah.
I didn't, I, I watched the meeting at, uh. Yeah, I said, may supply the building to them, but it would be, uh, approximately. Hey, so what, what, what actually did on this?
So if there's any, um, I can tell them that the board men had no issues. Unless there's something that you want to.
They're not coming, just then.
Yeah.
We all did.
Well.
There's no company.
That's a different, that's a different.
Indisputably no comment, right?
All right. National Planning Commission presentation twenty twenty three, uh, regional housing needs assessment.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to let you guys know that, um, I also was going to come, but also had a housing committee members just come as well. So like listen to presentation, I think it'd be a good, like, oh, yeah, kind of kickoff. Information, um, for them, um.
So while they're setting up, can you clarify for me, so when we're looking at the housing update for Barrington? Do we have a mandate to look at housing regionally as well? Or are we looking only at the, the effects in Barrington?
Only at Barrington. I'm partially answer that question on that slide. Let me get, um, I have a presentation. I'm just going to pull up the presentation, I'll just, um, quickly introduce us, Manina Johnson, Director at East River Regional Commission. Uh, this is my. Third regional housing needs assessment, um, where they're done every five to ten years, so you can hear the map, um, Mark.
My name is Mark TV, I'm one of the planners.
And Mark. Yes, his first one, but Mark was one of the, um, data analysts, uh, and, uh, writers on that. I'm happy to be here and share the findings with you, uh. Mark, if I can just intrude, I'm going to take the first slide, um, and so answering your question, a regional housing needs assessment is prepared. Ideally every five years as called for in state statute, one of the regional planning commission's statutory obligations. And the statute expressly calls upon the planning commissions to perform these studies. To be of assistance to you or municipalities, um, in the preparation of your housing chapters. Now, your housing chapter does not mandate that you look regionally. Um, I will say though, as we talk about some of the housing trends here, um, throughout the presentation. It is very difficult to disaggregate an individual municipality from the region. And part of that is because of the statistical analysis and the data that goes into it. When we're looking at individual communities, particularly smaller ones, um, the, the data. Solinity and margins of error tend to go up, and so by looking at that larger geography, you're going to get more statistically representative data and information. Um, so that's in part how we're going to walk through the findings here tonight. We're going to present it globally from, from the regional perspective, but we're going to highlight, uh, where Barrington fits within those regional trends. Okay, so with that, Mark, taking away the key terms.
So a lot of the, um. Data we went off of was based on a lot of general trends, as Jen said, that we know to be true in New Hampshire, in Stratford County. Um, population is, is increasing, but it'll be tapered off a little bit, I'll talk about that more in a second. Um, the cost has gone up, we just have not kept up. Reduction of housing has slowed as well. Employment is changing, yes, you all know with work from home, uh, we'll talk about that, Dan, a little bit too. Um, so there's just a number of factors that I can do it. Population is increasing both regionally and doing in Barrington, I'm sure you know that you have, you had kind of a housing boom in the nineties and early two thousands. Um, your population is expected to hit ten thousand sometime after twenty thirty, but it'll, it'll, probably after there's some point, it's a little of the whole region. Um, we just hit hundred and fifty, two thousand, something in the region for, at the twenty twenty census, um, headed even further up after that. Um. Population is aging, um, we have a wide range in this area of New Hampshire, just because U and H in the south. Those communities tend to be younger, but up in the north, you start getting a little bit older dipping into Carroll County and Wakefield and those kind of communities. Um, Barrington's median age went up about two years between twenty ten and twenty twenty, um, but it still remains at the lower end. In the, in this region. Um, household sizes are declining, um. And a lot of families in the nineties with that housing boom, but now they're starting to grow up. Um, folks are getting older, their adult children are moving out, so it's kind of changing the game.
Next question.
Yeah.
Would, this data is current as of twenty twenty?
Twenty twenty, twenty twenty three, the market stuff is more recent.
Just, just because some of what we're talking about is not what I'm, I'm seeing when I look at what's selling and what's happening in our public schools and in and around the community.
So we know like the school enrollment is going down, if that's what you mean? Yep.
Generally in New Hampshire it is.
In, in New Hampshire, but Barrington is.
Could be going slightly up, did it go down?
Think all of the vision, yeah, the fourth grade is, I've watched, um, baby, um, teaching before, it's pretty much been slapped the last.
Like, yeah, it's moving up.
About four hundred fifty kids.
So the, the kindergarten class was up like twenty, I think almost twenty children, um, this past year, and the elementary school. Was seeing an increase as well, based on the last conversation that I had with the elementary school.
It's a bit off there. And they just did a ten year study, and they project this be at fourteen hundred and twenty seven kids, which is now all the way up to ten years, so this will be fourteen hundred and twenty seven kids.
And their current enrollment is.
Probably fourteen twenty seven total.
I thought we were smaller than that currently.
And when the Stratford County Regional Planning Commission presented that in the land use last, um, meeting, they were using two thousand and fifteen data, which seemed kind of. Out of date for us when we were thinking about the growth and.
That might have been the land use data.
Right. Um, so your data is more correct than that.
So it all depends on what data we're talking about, and so land use data is something that, um, we are dependent upon. New Hampshire Department of Transportation to do the flyovers, uh, and then we will, under our program, go in and digitize the, the land use change. Those flyovers didn't happen because of COVID, or they did, and they were delayed, so the process hasn't, like, we don't have those, those twenty twenty flyovers yet. To be able to go in and digitize the land use change, so we, there is, we're kind of stuck with twenty fifteen as the best available. Uh, when it comes to, uh, population, anything demographic, socioeconomic that we get from the US Census Bureau. Um, from there, the most recent information and data we have is twenty twenty one, that is the most recent that has been released from the Census Bureau.
Um, that's what used to be the long proof census, all of like super, super, super difficult stuff.
Correct. Because the twenty twenty one, um, data is that, that long form, it's a sample, the margins of error in it are atrocious. Um, and in many cases, the data is not statistically, um, valid, particularly for the small, for smaller communities. Um, so where the twenty twenty decennial census, which is the hundred percent count census, is available, we will often defer to that. Because it is more reliable, um, than, than the, than the survey data, the estimates. Uh, and then on the housing costs, the housing cost data, um, it has either been, um, pulled from, um. Yes, New Hampshire Housing and then the Realtors Association, M L S data, um, but the New Hampshire housing data is current through twenty two. Who, it was actually, yeah, depending on which surveys, I think when we were finalizing our analysis, um, we had partial year twenty two data, um, from New Hampshire Housing. And that would have been on purchase price and rental costs. So just to kind of give you an idea of the currency of the data, I mean, we're at a point where, um, for this, the timing is just spectacular. Because we've got the best, most reliable data, um, and so it's going to be. Well timed, um, in terms of the data availability.
Does, does this include, like, the development of the neighborhood out back here, the eighty units that are going in down the road, like?
People get to, um, later on, and so one of the things I'd like you to be thinking about as we kind of go through the presentation. Is the things that have changed in the last couple of years, because those are the things that aren't going to be captured in the data, and those are going to be the pieces of information that are going to be really important for you as a community to bring forward. When you start working on that master plan update, what we're going to have for you right now is, again, it's that high level, it's that, that regional view with some glimpses in at the individual municipal level. Um, but it's going to lack that nuance of things that are ha- have happened on the ground in the last two years. Um, and that's where doing your master plan chapter now is a great opportunity, because you can take what you've got here for this good baseline of information. And then go in deeper and in, in, in a little bit more depth and a little bit more detail when you work on that master plan chapter itself. Um, I will say that for everything that is here. Uh, we do have it at the municipal level, um, and so Mark is one of the people who, um, when you're digging into things, you could call up and say, Mark, I want to know what, you know, this particular. You've got this table at the regional level, um, in the housing needs assessment, but I want to know what it is for Barrington, and we could pull it. It may also be in, already in, we've got a data companion, companion that goes with the regional housing needs assessment. That has a lot of the municipal level data already there as well.
And a lot of the transities later, straight from that document.
Correct.
Yeah, from twenty ten to twenty twenty, they usually barrier and issue.
I'm glad you said that, that's on my next slide.
Yeah, okay.
But we already have three hundred, nearly three hundred residents of the pipeline.
Right.
It weren't only what, two years into.
Right. So hold on to that, and we're going to get to a lot of these things.
Just a general, so I went and pulled up, pulling the data, like, if you look at K through eight enrollment. Um, it trended up to about nine hundred and twenty two, it dipped in twenty twenty, and then went straight back up in twenty twenty one to twenty. And nine twenty two, and if you look at high school data, it's gone from four twenty five up to four hundred and eighty five, which is just.
Yeah, and we don't have the, the school enrollment data pulled in here, but there is a section in the recent regional housing needs assessment that does expressly, um, address that. And one of the things it does note is that you cannot look at the twenty twenty, uh, enrollment data, because it is an outlier.
Right.
So, yeah, throw out twenty twenty, um, so, all right, so if we could, we're, let's keep modeling. Yes, that one. So here we go.
Um. Talking about data sources, the building permits area is actually one that that's directly from, that's from each town to us. Every year we come and bug the code enforcement officer at every town and say, how many units did you build? Whether it's multifamily manufactured, single family homes, this is great for you guys, um. The left chart is more broad, region wide, so this spike in multifamily, you see in twenty eighteen, a good chunk of that is from Riverwoods in Durham. That's several hundred, that was a several hundred unit development, as you probably know, um, on the right, that's you guys, that's Barrington, um. So it's really speaks to, and this isn't picking Barrington out of the line, this is town by town across New Hampshire, that's what that graph would look like. Um, in Barrington's case, it's half, um, the units built from, um. Before, during, right after the recession, and then, uh, the twenty tens, so. Um, and you know, in this town, you have a very small sliver of multifamily at the top, um, so that, that's going to be a little bit different from town to town, but. The magnitude of each is large in the same. Um, it's a big one, Austin hasn't gone way, way up.
But what, but what it looks like is, it's kind of an indication going down, and then Johnson. Three hundred, those improvements are so far with the first two years, so your data says it's going down, and the first two years of this decade are already exceeding this previous ten years.
These are plans.
This is purely saying what happened in the past.
Yeah.
That's not, that's not saying what's happening in the future.
Kind of indicated it's trending down, and I don't think that's the case.
That's as recent as twenty twenty, though.
Right.
And there's a lag with that data, because we're looking at. Beyond that.
Yes.
Well, my point is, this says it's going down.
Well, it's totally going down.
Where can we get the projections? So hold that, hold that thought, we'll get there.
Like what Andy said, I think a lot of the housing is going in, and it's probably more in stodderin', so more likely to have kids. Um, than our current population.
Again, hold, hold that, yes.
You know what? Sorry.
This one?
Yes, um, the big one, um, this is again, regional, um. So the median in Stratford County, Stratford Region is, of course, around three hundred, three fifty somewhere. Um, I would imagine Barrington's was a decent bit higher than that, um. Rockingham next door, their median is way up in the five and six hundred area, um, and of course, this one is actually split out by. Current existing homes and new builds, um, obviously your new builds are going to be a little bit higher, um. And that sample size, the bar graph underneath is what, um, that's all through M L S, the median purchase price, the lines is just, um, that was all. Market based through M L S and the Realtors Association maybe, but also New Hampshire Housing, um, so we think that's good sum of data. Um, you can keep moving. Um, rent is the other one, um. It's interesting, because there's the median rent as surveyed by the Realtors Association and the others who keep tabs on that, which is. Includes things like legacy rent for people who've been paying, who've been in the same unit for multiple years, but it also, um. Another way to display this chart could be with the, um, HUD Housing and Urban Development, where our rent, um, survey, and that's the projection they give for. Every zip code, every county in the country, um, for what is assumed to be fair market rent, which is more. It's more indicative of what someone with moving units will be seeing on Silo, or on apartments dot com as they're moving around, um, so it's, it's really staggering. The. Skyrocketing the last couple of years. For good. Yeah.
Yeah, actually, if you go back, I'm just, I'm sorry, I'm just going to point out, so the, the little purple dot on the side, that's, that's what's, um. For, uh, calculated as the affordable rent for the median, um. The median household in the region, so if you take like what that median income is in the region and what they could afford at thirty percent of their income. That's the thousand, just about thousand four hundred would be what that, that kind of middle household could afford for rent. Whereas the, the regions weren't were over a thousand six hundred, um, and I think. Um and I think, I think, yeah, Mark, you pulled a little bit of Barrington. So Barrington's increase hadn't wasn't as white as to be, but it was still, so the region has been um sixty seven percent increased over the last ten years. Um Barrington's was sixty two percent increase, still pretty substantial if you think about like as a as an increase in costs over ten years.
Um Barrington, as you know, is in the crossroads, in the crosshairs of it all commuting wise. Um there's a map in the transportation chapter that you just approved um that lays it all out regionally and. You'd see Dover, Rochester, Portsmouth, Concord light up for where people are going from here. So naturally, that left circle that you see is, that's similar of what you'd see in Barrington. But I think the left circle is gonna be quite a bit larger, I think I wrote that in the notes too. Um it's gonna be smaller than people who are just coming into Barrington to work every day with an even tinier sliver in the middle of people who work in and live in Barrington. Um the employment chart got cut off, but we know that the unemployment unemployment rate is um. Getting smaller day by day. Um so, so it's uh things, it's changing.
Yeah, and and where we have that, we have that, you know, naturally, we all know that there was a dip in employment levels in twenty twenty and twenty twenty one as a result of COVID. What we do know is that has popped back up and it's projected to, we're we're still projected to see employment growth um throughout the region.
So this is where we can talk about you versus your neighbors as far as proportionally who's growing where. Um net migration was the population change experienced in a community that is not a result of births or deaths. Births obviously increase the population, deaths obviously decrease it. So when you take the actual subtraction of the whole or um the population and subtract that out. You're left with who's moved into your community or moved out of your community. Um so green that you see in this chart across all of these towns is um who's moved in or out. Largely in this region, people are moving in then out, there's only a couple of communities that we see here that are have. Net lost populations, um but this is adjusted for percentage and not, this isn't the rough figure. So um your growth rate, for example, isn't as high as Dover's, but it's also um more than we or. New Durham, I guess, so.
Yeah, I think the other thing that I would note for Barrington particularly is that if you look at the blue, which is. Births and you look at the magenta, which is deaths. Um that natural, you put those together, you subtract your deaths from births, that's your natural population change. It's actually higher here in Barrington. Um and so that's kind of in part indicative of what you're you're identifying with school enrollments. That means you still have folks having kids here in town, whereas there are other communities where that's not so much the case. Um like you look at Rochester, um and they're about equal, their net, their their net um. Natural population change is about zero. Um so, so that's.
There's some places in New Hampshire that are, all of their population growth right now is rooted in people moving in and not having kids.
Yeah.
So. Um the housing that is here in Barrington and in the region is not matching what is needed necessarily. Um this slide is more about the market than it is necessarily about the types of structures that are here. But we all know what Zillow looked like in twenty twenty, twenty twenty one, and that's right here on the board. Um it's gone down, I think it's recovered a little bit as we've gone into twenty twenty three, but this is as of late. Twenty twenty two, um on the right, you have the rental vacancy rate. A healthy rental market is considered a vacancy of five percent, and in Stratford County, it hasn't been that since twenty thirteen. Um I think when we masked it off of the whole sea coast. Um it's maybe two hundred rental units available at any given time that are vacant. As this um that's the most recent figure, so a little scary.
In relation to what, like two hundred units is a great number, but how many people are actually seeking?
More than that.
Well, yeah.
Well, no kidding, but I mean, what's the, like, is there a, is it two hundred to four thousand or what's the?
Five percent.
Yeah, so I mean that.
So if two hundred units is like point zero zero three percent, then it should be way like whatever brings you to five percent.
Well, five times four should be a thousand.
So we've been hovering at about one percent vacancy rate, so that approximately two hundred is one percent of them of the supply. Um when you're at a one percent vacancy rate, essentially that's indicative of the time. That it takes for one person to move out, to put it on the market, and someone to move right in. That's almost immediate turnover. Days on market, similarly, we must from when it's listed to when the closing occurs. Um so to see that down, you know, below sixty or ninety days. I think that's, we've all heard the stories of of.
People bidding on houses.
Multiple people bidding on houses and and getting rejections because there's just too many people trying to for the same property.
In the main document, there's a chart that um. New Hampshire Housing or the Realtors Association or somebody was able to pull how often. Purchased homes were purchased for more than they're asking it by how much, and like if you have that a hundred is your baseline, how? To get it correct up to one, ten percent at one point, yeah. Um it's in this thing we're rooted in what's known as cost burden, and that's the idea that you should be spending. No more than thirty percent of your income on your housing, and that's not just your rent or your mortgage, that's only utilities and insurances. Um that you could. Um naturally, owners and renters of lower income spend more on housing, it's just kind of how it's been for a long time. Um but as we've moved into this housing crisis, it's kind of spreading across all income levels. Um again, affecting renters disproportionately to owners, but um. On the next slide, we'll talk about um what it takes for someone to move out of the renter market and into the ownership market. Um the thing with the median rent is that I think. When you go back to two thousand nine, to afford that uh fair market rent here in Barrington, you'd have to make. Forty one K, I wanna say, in two thousand twenty three dollars to afford that rent in Barrington in two thousand nine. And now it's way up at the sixty thousand um. About sixty K uh area, but the median renter income in Stratford County, I know I'm switching geographies here. But the median rent in Stratford County is up at um or down, I should say, at forty nine K right now. So it's it's really hard to get out of the rental market because prices in the rental market and the um purchase market are just. Kind of out of control.
Okay, so jump in here. So the the next really fun thing that we found, it seems like a little doom and gloom. But you know, we all know that in an attempt to regulate or stabilize the markets and the Fed had increased uh inflate. Yes, uh they had increased um interest rates on loans. And so one of the things we wanted to look at is what is the impact of that increase in um interest rates on? Uh mortgage for the median home in the region. And so, you know, median home is around four hundred thousand, take a nice, nice, nice even number. You take that same home in December of twenty one, um same price, same down payment. Uh and then compare it to uh nine months later, um this past fall. Uh when interest rates were up at seven, just over seven percent, and that added over nine hundred dollars just to the individual monthly payment. So essentially, when you know, an individual is going in to purchase a home, that means they're gonna have to bring down the cost of the house to match what they can afford. Um that four hundred thousand dollar home may now be well out of budget for um folks going to purchase it. Um so hopping over to the next piece, you know, to make it even more um rosy. Uh another piece of what we looked at was. Incomes of common professions within the region. Uh and what that household could potentially afford. Now, I will first give you the caveat that these two charts here are for a single wage earning individual. This does not account for two wage earners in a household. So for example, um uh engineers in the region, even those who have. Are at the entry level of the profession, a single individual um working as an engineer could afford. Uh the rent in the region, all right, and the horizontal bars, that's what's the median price. Uh so an engineer could go in and find a a place to rent that they could afford, they wouldn't necessarily have to have a roommate or a spouse or partner. To share that class with, but then you go over onto the purchase price side of things, and if that engineer were to try to purchase a home. Um on their own, they do not have enough income on their own to afford that same uh to afford the median. Uh purchase price. Uh so what that means is is that we've got folks that are forced to double up if if they're not already or. Hope you've got someone to share the rent with or share your mortgage with. So talking, we were talking about projections and where we see where things are going. Uh so as part of the process, the regional planning commissions, and one of the things we didn't know at the beginning, is that we did this work in conjunction with the other eight regional planning commissions in New Hampshire. Uh working with the um state's Department of Business and Economic Affairs, as well as New Hampshire Housing Finance Authority. And together with with those other folks, we pooled together to prepare the um housing production. Uh needs or projections for all of New Hampshire. Uh and so these these numbers you can pull and compare, whether you're in our region, you're in another region. It all pulls together and all ties to the same uh housing projections uh that are in the state's housing needs assessment as well. Um to do this work, we referred to the state statute on the. On workforce housing to understand and define what affordable is. Um the projections, we started with population projections that Mark had shared on one of the very first slides. We started with those population projections and took those that projected growth. And then used what's called a headship model, getting into the weeds here, to determine how many households are anticipated to. Be added as a result of that population growth. And then we looked at, okay, so of those households, if we assume the same split as we have today for homeowners and renters. We broke up those households into those two groups. And then we used um, we kind of split how we. Allocated those households to individual municipalities by looking at each individual municipality's projected population growth. So fifty percent of your households were based upon population growth. The other fifty percent are based upon your community's share of employment in the labor market area. All of this to say is that the model looks at and tries to project new housing needs. Based upon a combination of employment trends and population growth trends. Um and it's further than uh subdivided based upon number of households above and below. The definitions of affordable. Uh so go ahead to the next slide. Um and just breaking this out and what this kind of looks like in the in in the pie chart. About a third of the projected need is is renter households, that's about what we have today. And about two thirds is um homeowners, uh and then you can kind of see how it's then subdivided based upon that affordability definition. So as a region, we have a projected need of just over nine thousand five hundred new housing units. Between now and twenty forty. If we go to the next slide, but if we look at just Barrington, the projected need is about five hundred and sixty new units between now and twenty forty. Um and then part of what we were talking about before, that that kind of burst that we're seeing right now. Um you can see that also here in the first five years of that projection horizon. So this starts from twenty twenty, so all of those units that you've had in the queue between twenty twenty. Uh and today. Presumes to be within this projected, say, a front LA three hundred and forty new units. Be between twenty twenty and twenty fifteen. One of the things I'll say, all projections are wrong, but some are useful. That's what we need to. None of us have a crystal ball, so the best we can do is is understand the components of change. And try to understand and plan for what we see coming for demand within our community.
A quick question, how did?
Yeah.
Of the regional units, you had, you know, nine five hundred roughly, how do you arrive at a five fifty nine for Barrington?
Yes, that goes back to those population projections and the employment projections. Um and those, the number of households, and so what, we had a consultant that prepared it for us, and they started with with those numbers. At the municipal level, they started with your projected population, and so the nine fifty is an aggregation of the. Individual municipal projections um within the region.
Is that okay, well, I mean, on transportation, it's clear that, you know, people who elsewhere work other than terrible can.
Yes.
We don't have any workforce here to speak of.
Right.
So, I mean, why do we have a population allocation of the sayings everywhere else that it does have industry of jobs?
No, I would say what we don't have here is the other communities. My guess, my guess is you actually have a slightly suppressed um projected number of new households. Because you're gonna have other communities such as Rochester and Dover that are going to carry a larger share of employment. And therefore, they're they're receiving a larger share of the of the households. Um so what happens is, like you said, we take, it's very, it's very in the weeds. Um Excelsior, but you know, you take the fifty percent of the projected population. And break that down into the number of households that that is, so assume you're just over two people per household, you know, so you take. Whatever the projected population is for the community, shrink it, that's your households, take half of them there. Take the other half, and then what they did is they did a shimmy between the towns um across labor market areas. So not regional planning commissions, but labor markets, so they looked within a labor market, where do people work? Um and that's how they they shifted the other half of the projected population. Um so first, communities that have fewer jobs, you saw a kind of a a. Decrease in the projected housing units. Um because when compared to if we had just allocated a hundred percent of the households based upon population growth. So that, so you probably have a lower housing projection than um other communities. Take, you know, take, you know, the the extremely rural, like the Brookfields and New Durums, they're gonna see. Even less of a uh. Demand um as a result, so you're probably in the middle.
Yeah, I I guess I'm just trying to reconcile that with transportation gen.
Yeah.
Information where everybody leaves.
Yeah.
Barrington to go work somewhere else.
Yeah.
I mean.
Yeah.
We don't want you to work for us housing, where nobody works here.
Yeah, that's refract, that is factored into that five sixty. That projected number, yeah. Um yeah, so if we, no, go back, sorry. You know, the only thing I just wanted to kind of make note of is that we've got a um, we've got a decline coming. Um so, so well, actually, thank you, Mark, you actually did the building permits issue. So you know what, you're, you've got far more building permits issued than um. Yeah.
And both towns in New Hampshire have, like, they've done, they had done the work leading up to the recession. So what's being asked in towns leading up to twenty forty is actually less than, in a lot of cases, what was built leading up to the recession.
Yeah, the other thing I'll just note is that projection, projected demand is declining. If you remember back, we were talking about net migration and we were talking about natural population change, well, as we have some natural population declines. Uh we also have a decline um in or a tapering off in population growth.
It, are we expected to see a decline in population growth? Cause if you look, New Hampshire is an is an in migrating state because we're a tax favorable state. Our cost of living side, but everything else is favorable here.
So it's the net pop, it's the. So, it's the nat pop, it's the natural population. So, because New Hampshire is older on the whole, we are, New Hampshire is around twenty four, around twenty forty is projected to see negative population change in almost every community state.
Thousand deaths exceeding births by twenty forty, twenty forty.
Right.
That's all the moment.
So. So, the only growth that New Hampshire is going to be seeing is from in migration.
What's that, about five thousand a year right now?
I don't know that, the specific.
It's in the.
Yeah. So, so, yeah, so that's, so right now, we still have some natural population growth increase and in migration, and the future we're projected to only have in migration. The thing that could change that would be who's migrating in. You know, is it just folks that are, you know, forties and fifties and are, you know, past child rearing age? Or are we going to start to see folks, younger folks start to move into New Hampshire and thus drive the median age lower and in turn increasing our birth rates in New Hampshire? But birth rates have been on a steady decline for quite some time at this point.
I think the reason it looks sort of cute in the first two columns, it's higher than the other two, and it's not just a plateau, because that's playing catch up. This initial first years leading us to the end of this decade.
We have the second lowest birth rate, right?
It's extremely low, yeah. Okay, so just, this is kind of getting into preparing some resources for when you start digging into the housing chapter of your master plan. And so, one of the things that we did is we, for all of eighteen communities within our region, we pulled their zoning ordinances as well as various natural resource data layers and the developed land data layers. So, as you know, the developed land data layer is somewhat outdated, so it is not perfect. But what we did is then we, we subtracted any land that is constrained. So, if it is developed, if it is wet, anything along those lines, we pulled that land out so that we could see where we have developable residentially zoned land in the region. And so, that's the first, the first one here. And so, if you want to click through, and then we went through and looked at those that had access to sewer, or sorry, water infrastructure, water only. Next, sewer and sewer only, newer, next, both sewer and water. I think you got, or maybe you're there, no, okay, sorry. Because that's just one of the things that's there to help us understand what we can support on our landscapes within the region. There's no one size fits all recommendation for development patterns or types of development. And so, we want to work to identify and right-size our recommendations to the community based upon what can be supported by, by the land. Okay, so go ahead. So, the regional housing needs is, it also touches upon a bunch of different newer trends that are more difficult to quantify how they might impact the housing market. So, while I said it was great to start and do the housing needs assessment now when we had really good data out of the Census Bureau, it's also not so great because we have some significant fluctuations that are happening in the market that are going to change things, and we just don't know how. So, you know, we had COVID, we've got climate change. We know that the northern states are attractive states for folks, you know, where it's getting significantly hotter. I personally wouldn't want to be south of New Hampshire in the summer, even as humid as it gets here. Monetary policies, you know, we've seen the, the interest rates increasing. Where are we going to go? How are, how are things going to, going to level out? Student enrollment fluctuations, not just at school, like, you know, you're taking twelve schools, but also UNH. That has a significant impact on our region as a whole between number of faculty that they have there and, and purely, you know, the student enrollment levels. They did see a significant drop in enrollment in twenty twenty and twenty one. And so, it's still, we're still waiting to see how that, how that plays out. Also, as the university develops more housing on, on its own campus, that changes the demand for rental in the region as a whole. Smaller household sizes that we mentioned, a lot of these projections, what we do is we take the current household composition and we use what it is today to project into the future. So, should there be a significant change in the number of people in the average household? Should there be a significant change in the age of households? That will also impact what those projections look like and how things play out. So, remember I said all projections are wrong, some just happen to be useful. Things to keep in mind. Again, we already talked about impacts of an aging population and, and its impact on natural population change, construction costs. We've seen significant disruptions from supply chains. You know, I know, not sure how things are exactly today. I know a couple of years ago, like, you couldn't get your cabinets when you were constructing something new. They were significantly backordered. And then the other one, it's not as much of a, an issue in our region as opposed to the north country of New Hampshire, is the short-term rentals. Short, the north country actually has a significant number of short-term rentals. For our region, it's a small number and they tend to be kind of north of Rochester. So, those are kind of some of the, we have to wait and see factors that, that are, that are out there. So, want to just kind of wrap up with resources that have been created as a part of this whole initiative. As the nine RBCs worked together, we said we want to at least, you know, we're presenting a lot of doom and gloom. Can we put together some resources and materials to help communities as they move forward? So, one of the things, it was just published there, been some ongoing webinars on Thursday afternoons.
Thursdays in June.
Thursdays in June at noon, hosted by the Office of Planning and Development. They're going through and sharing many of the materials developed as part of, calling the New Hampshire Housing Toolbox. There's an interactive website, there's also a publication. It walks through everything you would ever want to know about, if you go ahead and click to the next twenty different planning and zoning mechanisms. We're not saying that all of these should be adopted by every community. We're saying there, there are different ways that you can go about planning for your, your community's future and how we see development occur in the future. That is it in a nutshell.
There's a lot of good solutions that are, I guess there was a question, like, what did workforce housing look like? There's a lot of that here. But that's, it's not one size fits all. There's five or six things, maybe a dozen things in here that could apply to Barrington in particular. A lot of the case studies in there are things that have already been completed in the last decade, things that are ongoing right now, both in our region, in New Hampshire, in New England, in my hometown of Maryland. So, there is like all kinds of stuff.
By chance.
By chance.
I think the dilemma here is that some of the low-cost housing solutions are not well received here in town. We'll put in the, you know, the more workforce housing models. Personally, I'm trying to get that affordable, number one. But number two, the resident acceptance has been poor. So, you know, we have this situation where people want to be residents.
Yeah.
You know, they haven't got as much influence as the current residents that are here and come to meetings and tell us what they think. And so far, the reception has been poor on, on multi, you know, multiple. It just hasn't been good with the feedback in the theater.
It's not uncommon.
And.
We, past boards have approved, I guess, a hundred and twenty units of townhouse. Two projects. And the reaction was such that they changed the zoning. So, if they were to do that again today, it would get twenty one and fourteen, thirty four total out of a hundred and twenty.
And that was based on, you know, resident reaction to this.
The original purpose, the only feelings they had.
Yeah.
They did the town center in that area. And people wanted to concentrate development there, so the zone had reflected that.
Yeah.
Just in ten to fifteen years, the whole mindset apparently changed. Or at least some of them being built. The eighty hadn't even started yet, so that's still, to start soon, so.
I'm going to change, I think, everybody, if they ask them if they're in favor of workforce housing, they'll say yes. But when they see it actually built, they say it's fair.
It doesn't have to be dense, is the thing. That's what's in here, that's what this time is.
About that forty units that are being built, rents a twenty five hundred to twenty seven hundred fifty dollars a month, plus fifty dollars for each dog. I can believe that. So, it's not workforce housing.
No, it's not.
But it follows the model, it's, you know, it's.
Yeah.
Well, it's multi-family housing, and it's, and I'd project the eighty who's going to go in, it's going to be the same thing.
Yeah.
You're not going to build it for a thousand dollar a month rent, it's going to be able to for as much as they can get. Unfortunately.
Yeah, and I mean, as much as I like to advocate for, you know, building for, you know, anyone in any income level, you can't tie the hands of the developers themselves. They're ultimately going to choose to do what they choose to do.
They're going to sell at market price.
And remember to sell at market price.
The price is high and they live more in this.
That's right.
If you're in Boston, they'll give me a twenty percent to be so-called affordable housing. But if you look at the projected income of this, it gets up over a hundred thousand.
Right.
Yeah, so you're not bringing, you know, waiters and waitresses or servants and ordinary people. Well, I guess you're ordinary people now, the people paying twenty seven hundred dollars a month.
So, I have any other questions? I think Vanessa gave you a link to where we have the public needs assessment, these variables online. There are, you know, as I mentioned before, there's the housing needs assessment itself. There's also the data snapshot from Canyon document, that all it is is just data. So, there's a lot of information, a lot of great resources. And, you know, that team looks forward to continue the conversation as they kick off.
And is there all Barrington? Is there Barrington-specific data so you can look? So, like, the housing committee can look exclusively at.
The data of Canyon will have a lot of town by town. It won't be like a Barrington-only document, but you will be able to pick out Barrington stats.
But as part of the scope of the master plan, you'll be pulling those. All right.
Thank you.
Did, did you, like, I know we've got a bunch of the housing committee here. Did you want to ask if they had any questions or anything like that? Do you want to open that up?
Open up a comment, anybody have questions or comments about the conversation?
So, a bit of a data creep myself. Much of what I have looked at shows a very different picture for Barrington, including the draft of regional planning commissions, most recent snapshot regarding Barrington. And I'm curious if we have a way that we can gauge how much is Barrington an outlier in comparison to what we're seeing regionally? Because I think as we're approaching this master plan for housing, it becomes super important for us to know, are we the one silo in a municipality? Or are we surrounded by five or six municipalities that are seeing that same
Yeah.
snapshot? You know, for instance, our average income is seventy seven thousand. College attainment in this town, forty seven point six percent. It's, it's crazy high and it's very different in the municipalities that may be surrounding us within this particular region. So, I think those things become important points.
I would agree, and that's definitely something that you pulled out as you look at that to characterize the community itself in relation to its peers and neighbors.
And as Jen mentioned before, a lot of the ACS, specifically the census, a lot of that can be not necessarily corrected, but it can be seen for how statistically significant it is based on population, the population density as compared, just compared to the sample size they got through long form census.
And then my one other question is, and this, this percentage was recently published, but over the past ten years, we've had natural population change of twenty percent in the state of New Hampshire, which means many people moving out, many people moving in.
Yeah.
And so, I think one of the things, you know, I have friends that have worked with the initiative work, work space way. As you graduate UNH, you come back, you raise your kids here, things like that. But a twenty eight percent change in population over ten years, how typical is that for a state? Or again, are we an unusual state experiencing something very different? And I think as we're approaching housing, we really need to think about these things.
Yeah.
Are we a unicorn? I think that's what we are.
I did have one other question. Like, as we talked about home price in there, do you folks correlate the mill rate or the tax rate in that, because that's a driver of affordability and how much folks can afford?
That made it in there.
I didn't, I didn't see anything on it, so that's why I was asking.
Yeah. And a lot of the quotes you'll see, there were several rounds of surveys that went out for this whole process. And several, a lot of elderly folks said the property rates are, would keep them or not keep them in where they want to retire.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The main sales for Barrington, the average household was four hundred and sixty thousand.
Yeah.
And I have one more quick question. I noticed that the rate of those living with disabilities in our particular town is almost two percent higher than the average region. Really? Yeah, and I'm curious, so Barrington just recently, and in my opinion, you're inappropriate, but passed a total disability tax credit where those veterans that are experiencing service-related disability are able to receive up to four thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars off their annual real estate taxes. And if you think about that, you can almost pay down your mortgage, but you're not paying down the taxes. So, that may also make us that unicorn where it's impacting the number of people that choose to reside in this town. And that may define or experience disabilities as well. So, I'm curious about that because that, again, from a regional perspective, could shift people to our.
Yeah.
Get funding on that, the disability veterans, you know, a lot of us worked our whole lives and then became disabled.
Yes.
So, you know, the tax credit now is like a blessing that it's happening now. But it, you know, at the time, you know, we paid our taxes all the way up through.
I'll share with you, I'm a thirty-four-year Air Force. I am in support of that program.
I'm saying, so if we paid our taxes like for sixty years and all of a sudden we became disabled from service, disability.
Yes.
You know, granted, you know, but we didn't look to gift horse in the mouth when we moved because I've been living here my whole life.
No, but we have had an influx of people, and so that can begin to affect those numbers that we're looking at. And I think from a data perspective, it becomes important to protect it.
Any other questions? Willing to take questions?
Want to just, I just want to mention that your, one of your commissioners is here this evening, who represents the town of Barrington to the planning commission, so Matt Sam is here tonight. You know, because he's been super engaged and wanted to be here tonight as we presented. So, they get recognition, recognition. And I don't know if you guys have chatted before, worked together before, but the liaison, he's there at all meetings representing you as a community. See damage is there as well, yes. Matt's here tonight, so even those kudos.
Comment in terms of my role in that first segment of the episode. There, the data that I have access to with these focuses is the same. He used to say impressive, so I, on the invite of a few local groups, just presented a lot of the data you just saw. Just to get people informed what, what the future might look like, and to make for a more educated voter when they go. Order your warrant articles, whatever they may be in the future, there is a fair amount of heat about the condos and the apartments that are being built. What I'd be concerned about, and it came up in one of these discussion sessions, is that if it gets to the point where. The rents cannot be supported, meaning people aren't, they're going to Dover, on Rochester, no, they're going north. And they're not going there, then the tax burden for that particular condominium is gonna be more difficult for the owner to, to meet. And so what happens to maintenance, what happens to road maintenance, what happens to all those things that that tax would otherwise fund? It's a concern. Anytime you want a commission, you can go directly and come to me.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Alright, go back.
You think the other gentleman?
Oh, maybe else?
Yeah, let me just, the question I have, I guess you made a nice presentation, my question becomes, do you ever? Look at it demographically for the region in the sense. Cause I've already heard the comment, you know, I think the figure is worse, you know, forty-seven percent, forty-six percent college educated, seventy-seven thousand dollar average income. Is that unique for the county, or is, are we just representative of the county? Does that make sense to me? In other words, it's all high school educated in Rochester and. Junior college in Dover and so forth.
Particularly the median incomes, I know on the date, the data snapshot in Canyon, which lists out each community, so you can see where Barrington stacks up amongst its neighbors.
So is that, when you say you need to build five hundred and fifty-nine homes, are you assuming that we're looking for. I'll say this carefully, I'm relatively new, I'm wanting to get into the housing committee, I guess my question becomes. How do you fit this together, by that meaning. Are we at Barrington looking to get a, achieve a particular demographic salary compensation building type versus other areas? Did there ever been any study to say trying to do something different?
So, so yes and no, I know Vanessa already took down the presentation and that's fine, but if you. If you recall back to the giant pie chart, pie chart within a pie chart, what that does is it says, if. We were going to retain the current mix of households at or above. Certain income levels, and those income levels are matched to the definition of affordable in the workforce housing statute. How many new units would we need? For, you know, that same share of the population in the future, that is renters below sixty percent of the median income. And then what would be the share that would be renters above sixty percent of the median income? And then homeowners above a hundred percent of the median income and those below, so that breaks it out so that you can see. If you were to build so to match your current distribution of. Households based on a tenure and income level, what number of units you would need at those different price points.
Okay, so I was questioning differently then, if you're sitting in a town, not necessarily Barrington, but Rochester, Dover, wherever, you said, you know, I wanna bring in population.
Yeah.
Could these particular stats you're putting forth might not fit if the, if the aim of the. Town was to build growth in population.
Right, so I mean, that's one of the challenges that we were talking about, is the, as a municipality, you can formally age your land use policies. To at least make it possible to build at different price points and, and different tenures. But that's, that's all you can do. Minus actually acting as a developer yourself, and very few municipalities will. Want to, I would ask you, take on acting as a developer, you'll see the, the larger cities that have a housing authority, they. You know, and that's where they do build the lower income housing units, and they build it and they manage it. But by and large, most municipalities in New Hampshire, they do not do that, we do not build housing as a municipality. And so you are. At the chance and the whim of the market, and those who come before you be looking to develop. So that's why statutes, the way they're written, say that. The obligation as a municipality is simply to provide a reasonable and realistic opportunity for. Different types of housing to be constructed.
I'm coming down, so. One of the, the data sets that I noticed when I looked at the researches was that there's a clear demarcation on Route Nine. People north and east of Route Nine, the income and educational level is significantly greater, and if you go south and west of Route Nine, it is. Reversely, you know, much less, and so we end up with a situation where we're in danger, and I, I don't. Prefer to have our solution for this, but a balkanization of our time, you see that with major cities where you end up having, you know, ghettos and, and the like, I'm using the old term. But we don't wanna see that happen here, this is where it starts, this is where it seeds starts, and if we recognize that. Clear demarcation, maybe a housing policy, a land use policy will favor. Mixing that up a bit.
Mark, correct me if I'm wrong, did we do the concentration analysis, or did we include that in the RHNA, or is it not?
It's.
Yes, it is.
It's called the dissimilarity index, and that's sort of a modern quantification of segregation as it's. As it organically happens in the market, I guess you could say, or how it's. Blown into that over the past several decades. It, it's tricky because you, you sort of need like decent population density to arrive at that conclusion. But it can be done loosely for a lot of the small towns, and that's what we attempted to do.
There is, yeah, so there's that, and then there's also mapped, and. And that is good, part of what you were looking at is. Areas where we've identified concentrations, so what that means is it the. Statistical anomaly, that you have a larger share of a population or of any given population that's concentrated like in a location.
Veterans and civil experience with disability are a really good example of that, they're kind of there too.
Yes.
Yeah.
The persons who do not, who quantify the difference, not incomes, children, seniors, various different. Demographics, look at that and identify your concentrations, and potentially, yeah, for those that are some science issues in the room. What it, what it means is when you have a census tract that exceeds one standard deviation from the regional average. That's where we identify that as a concentration.
It's agree each other not quite for this outlier conversation.
Yes, sorry, we're taking over your homework.
Sorry, thank you.
We have to stop, we have to stop.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, seven D. Seven D work session.
Um, so, P and A, also let me clear this little thing, first one from this, just finish up a few things. You know, I meant to not have to. Can you go to the next meeting, or if you wanna come to the table? Whatever you feel. Probably not to talk with you. That'll be good. Okay.
Everybody.
I don't know if. You wanna go down, the cover page just shows the additional things that were not discussed at the last meeting. And then, um, there's some news actually, there's things moved around. Go down each everyone.
Yep, I'm having to page one of them. You have to say, uh, cheat.
Uh, I can, you know that.
You know, you sent me for the summary of things.
I think so, but I.
They've changed the edition from the May sixteenth work session.
Yes.
Yeah, I just wanted to go. Here's one. So, in one point four, there was a direct fixing note. I'm gonna turn my computer to catch up. I, I thought my computer has not been.
So he did, I could explain for him, um, we went to an inspection section, is that better in that area?
That wasn't just the way it was moved.
It was.
It was moved, it was kinda like it was kinda thrown into that section when it didn't really belong.
Okay, so now that we have a new.
I was taking off.
Yeah. Yes, makes better sense. I asked for this one for two twenty-five point nine, it was metal, it used to be seven days.
Yeah.
And they cut, applicants seem to put the limit and do like the seven days before, but then you need to get things to you like the next day, so it doesn't always, things need to get re-reviewed. Sometimes it gets hastily reviewed or done downtown for departmental comments, if the board is okay with extending that. And you get staff overall. Yeah, if I moved it before, I mean, the bad, like, it's like this. That was just like an editing comment. One color and eleven black, couldn't wait to copy it.
Oh, I just had to tie on that.
Yeah.
Do you wanna add electronic copies too? Electronic reading, make that a requirement. And PDF format?
Yeah, I think we have that in our rules of procedure. In the planning board, like for those mills to put, yeah. They're being.
One of the most traffic seventy, seventy outside for the trees.
This is another question, okay? Um, liberating that thing, and then, are we adding this down here and, although we. It seems like you're adding some stuff down the bottom, your manual counts per peak hour and stuff like that, you're taking out this section.
Yep.
I don't see why, is that being replaced with this language down here, I guess is my question.
Yeah, let me get to that section.
Are you talking about the removal, removing all of the preparation requirements?
No, there's, y'all, secondly, the traffic analysis should be, yes, yes, yes. Sorry, I didn't mean to think about that.
That yellow.
That, yeah.
It was, isn't that, is that tied into the whole conversation that there are fewer and fewer. Um, New Hampshire licensed PEs to perform these traffic engineering analysis?
Down here. And that I, I guess, is that replacing? If you're not gonna follow this format, are we adding that language so that there is a, a definition of how the council is supposed to be done, I guess that's my question.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm on that section now, so that. Playing document, or that, in fact, traffic impact analysis document, no longer exists, we can't find.
Or no, I took that, I'll take it out.
So we're taking that out, and then we're adding in that section below guidelines for content, traffic impact analysis, okay? Um, to better define what should be included in traffic analysis, okay?
Big thing is seasonal traffic.
And just from my own understanding, how are we calculating seasonal variation, is it just a, a traffic factor number that's built into that?
Dictating it, we're, there's, I'm not a traffic guy, so I can't speak.
Right, I'm just concerned that they're gonna, they're gonna.
Guidelines for that. And, yeah, they're not gonna come up with a whole.
No, well, they're gonna look at it.
They're gonna go instead of the morning.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna pick the seasonal traffic that best suits what I'm trying to accomplish here, so.
But I think of the regulations that we could point out, and they, you please look at it during.
I mean, we're expecting professional engineers to do the government properly, and not try to. Budget numbers too much.
I guess the reason of the concern is we had a recent project on the envelope. And.
Can see it, yeah.
It says.
We shouldn't name it.
Well, but. On a particular road.
I saw it written down.
And there was.
I'm part of your regular run route.
It says average weekday, and. That road would basically peak on the weekends because of the late traffic.
Yes.
And the, and the traffic of, let's say the project's up, I'm just.
Okay, no, that's good, that's good.
Or the, you know, to the campground, so. I think there was. Concerned that the traffic analysis was. Fully appropriate because of the, the weekday may not be the best day. If you were to find it is weekday, it's time to measure it. But just in traffic generation. Well, should we have one of those?
I, I, so I talked to our traffic guy, that reduced, you know, traffic analysis, and he said. I'm not, he wasn't really sure how you. You can't give him specific numbers. To increase, like, if you take your data in the winter. I don't know, there's a spec, specific number that you can increase that by for the summer time, for instance.
Yeah, this, I guess my concern here is this defines the weekday, if we have areas in our town which are. More recreational and, and the weekends are the, are really the peak. Shouldn't we have some flexibility to, you know, or some language to speak to that?
That could, that could be a review comment by us or whoever is working on your data at that time.
Yeah, but here, we still need to stay, it should be in week, week days. It's, it's in the language, so.
Oh, it's in the language.
Yeah, so we're, we're definitely weekday is the time to date the analysis. And to have, to have reflectability and say.
Right, it should be.
Or peak period or whatever. You know what I mean?
During average travel period, during peak travel period.
Yeah, I mean, what would happen to the. In the wintertime?
Yeah, I, now that I understand exactly what you're getting at.
Yeah. I can talk to them, I said. Yeah, we, we have the campground too, and that's, you know, that would, probably there would be definitely more on the weekends.
Friday night influx through to the, to the weekend and the Sunday night excess.
Or the counting machines, are you talking about the seven, five, three, two B?
Yes, yes.
Specific.
Yes. I, I'm, I'm concerned so too now, could we have more language more appropriate to the site, so the project.
Right, people wanna count on the weekday, not on the weekend.
I know.
Four entire section building envelope, which is a new section.
No, that section was actually there before, it's been. Yeah, that was there before, but we expanded it, oh, okay. Yeah, I was gonna say, I actually, I didn't know it was there before, until, until it started before.
Oh, okay. So I had some general comments on that. That I wanted to make sure we chatted on, where we talk about building envelopes. Building envelopes should not include areas with slopes more than thirty-five percent, is there? I, just from my own understanding, I was trying to, to pick up like. What does that ensure if we're going to a thirty-five percent slope, like, cause I'm, like, I think of people who, a, a house back into the side of the hill and they build a multi-story house, or.
What if that's already in a regulation?
I know, I'm just, I'm just trying to put a visual to it for my own brain. Like, what are, what are we really getting out of it?
Fine, I would say the erosion control would be very, very difficult on a site like that.
Yeah, so I, I think with the thirty-five percent slope, that's basically affordable, that's typically mobile. For the same landlord, and is generally stable to long decided. Start getting much deeper than that, and then you, and you're looking at. Uh, like an erosion control fabric, necessary or a riprap or something like that, so I think thirty-five percent is probably a fair threshold. For the areas within the building envelope itself.
Gotcha, okay. And then right below that on eleven point four, parents five.
Yep.
So the, the, I, I had five and six because. We have envelopes shall be a minimum of thirty-five thousand square feet of contingent. So the, the, I, I had five and six because we have envelopes shall be a minimum of thirty five thousand square feet of contiguous, contiguous buildable upland soil area. Depicted on a plat or building permit. And I was like, the thirty thousand to me seem and fifteen thousand, both seem like pretty small numbers. You're talking like a hundred and fifty by a hundred and fifty foot expandable area and technically like. At that point, now you're, the rest could be. You could have a two acre lot that is, or builders lot of one point eight eight acres that the rest could be wrapped for the most part.
Yeah, so, um, those numbers I just turned in there.
Yeah.
And I wanted to talk to you with that, and I thought that and what you thought was a reasonable building envelope size. So the thirty thousand square feet. Actually, I forget where I got that number from, the fifteen thousand was because of on conservation residential lots, I think the minimum lot size is twenty thousand square feet. So if you're not including the setbacks in the build of a lot, it needs to be something smaller than twenty thousand square feet, so I took fifteen thousand. That was the basis for that thirty thousand. Uh, not considering the regulations.
But it's, it's in as a percentage, I believe, it's a percentage of upland. It's like, uh, was it forty or sixty percent? It's somewhere in that range, I don't remember. I have to book the acting. No. No, regular building has a percentage of uplands.
Yeah, the zoning limits.
I. Believe so, yes.
To know that is a percentage has to be continuous.
Right. Because where we were seeing waivers were people who had a large lot and their percentage of upland. Might, might not meet the fifty percent, but far exceeds because they had like, say, eight acres and. Um, to have fifty percent of it is upland or sixty percent of it, though, like I got four and a half acres upland, but I don't. I'm never gonna build.
Activities that are taking place squared, I think.
Well, that's, yeah, that's where there should be like a minimum. For a builder's lot, but then it becomes a percentage or whatever after that.
Yeah.
I mean, fifteen is like twenty to the lot. If plenty of lots in town are probably according to.
This is a Massachusetts.
It's, it's, this is, you're probably on the quarter acre or.
Uh, point two, three, yes. I would love to have more land. Um, single family eighty, uh, in the G R and in our district, the minimum lot size is eighty thousand square feet, which must include at least, least sixty thousand square feet. Of hydric A open soils, open water bogs, rivers, rivers, streams and exposed ledge. Additionally, the sixty thousand square feet must contain at least thirty five thousand square feet of contiguous upland soils.
Okay, he's doing that thirty years.
Right, for each.
Okay, change that to thirty five, yep.
And then it, but it increases after that under four point two point one parents two for each additional one bedroom dwelling unit. Under a common roof, which doesn't qualify as an accessory dwelling under the ordinance, blah, 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 blah. Minimum loss size shall increase by forty thousand square feet. And in, and then goes on to say increased by thirty thousand square feet and the area of upland soil shall increase by fifteen thousand square feet. So it actually steps up progressively based on what someone's trying to do with their parcel.
Should we just defer to the?
I'm not sure of the zoning ordinance.
Yeah.
And I didn't realize this stuff is in here. So what I could say instead is.
I need, but the zoning does not make a comment on fourth or in sixth in the conservation subdivision.
Or you can just take out the eleven point four point five, it's already in the.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like, and then keep, keep that one.
Well, I don't know about that, I gotta go look, cause I feel like.
I looked everywhere, even when you see the breakout, they do the, uh, you know, twenty thousands and minutes. Lots of locations subdivision, doesn't mention the uplands anywhere for those. That's developments.
Well.
There's even John today at our meeting at that.
He had that eleven point four.
Well, they, well, they have to meet, so. I mean, one thing to keep in mind is they have to meet. They have to be able to show that even as a conservation subdivision that they could build as a conventional subdivision. Which means they would have to meet the minimum requirements for uplands for a conventional subdivision. So then in their conservation subdivision. There's got to be a stepped percentage, I, I know it's in there, I just have to go. I, I have to go to the zoning to look. I don't need any more homeworking. Um, but I'm almost positive it, it actually delineates out in here. I'll take it on as homework.
Or maybe it's not as appropriate to that year. That is, well, when Josh remember, I know.
You would wonder where that came from, fifty thousand.
Yeah.
Well, fifteen thousand, I don't think is a pretty good number.
Yeah, it's, it's not in apparent regulations.
It doesn't conflict with the zoning.
Unless any of you find them. Well, if Andy, you know, Andy's lot is fourteen thousand square feet, you know, so that, that to me is. It, it's a house convinced reasonably of fourteen thousands.
But my house is not a new development, my, mine was an existing non-conforming lot.
No, we're only talking about the buildable area on a, a, a two acre lot. So if you're, if you're a fourteen thousand square foot, you're okay. Seems to me that fifteen thousand on a two acre lot should be.
Well, what it, we're talking about fifteen, twenty thousand.
And I mean, what do you deem is okay? Because like I have to have an enviro septic, I've got a water source around my well, like. The, all the radiuses of everything around are tight, so you would never do that. Today.
Our potential. Projects somewhere that are saying they want to leave to have go to the minimum twenty thousand square feet for subdivision. Uh, conservation, so it might be good to keep this. I agree something good, I must be, I'm, I'm better than the number rather than.
Yeah.
Well, keeping, I like the number, but I think any example, if I have eight acres and I gotta do a third, why, why are you requiring from that for me rather than?
Yeah, well, that's more conventional, we're talking about a guy that.
The constitution division is gonna just do fifty, you know, twenty thousand feet. It gets constrained, you got the house lot, then you get to set aside four thousand feet for the septic and then you've got, he's got wetlands coming in the back, having to juice the actual usefulness.
Yeah.
Where are, I think I lost track where we are.
Well, we decide eleven point four point five to remove.
Do you want to remove it altogether or reference his own ordinance?
You can reference it.
It's always, yeah.
Look for it.
Yeah, yeah, I think so, I'm gonna reference it and then confirm that set is not already in the zoning ordinance. And then if it is in the zoning ordinance. Or if it's not the zoning, it should be added to the zoning ordinance and if it is consistent, we're all of.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, can I have another thought on, uh, to add to the zoning?
Okay.
Which, um, puts certain, and I didn't see it in there now, but requires requirements on the. Uh, on the open space, so it can't, so someone can just take all the non-budible area and make it open space, it needs to have.
Right.
Value to the open space.
Right.
It says, right, hold on.
Need to exceed fifty percent of the stock to put structural.
Yeah. That's in there now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, could be right into that number. Certain street. He needed a fifty, fifty percent of, because it was in the neighborhood. Fifty percent, but he. That was, you know, good lanes. Kind of hell sap factor of it. Yeah, but that, that is a good thing to find that, cause the buffer is not included in the non-budible stuff, you know, I mean, that's important.
Yeah.
Right, so, you know. It's, they, there are projects that, you know, buffers in the prime work, that are even more. But that's all included in, you know, in the good land, so to speak, you know what I mean, the buffer.
The buffer part of the.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Feet around prime work.
Yeah, that, it, it, yeah. But it's, it's included, it's okay.
Yeah, right, yeah.
I question whether that's the right way to go.
Yeah, well, maybe something should discuss. In our zoning.
You. Just be the base.
Is everybody gonna be here?
Don't want bike riding, that all month of August early hours.
Okay. Why not the crash or not?
All right. I heard you need training though, so you should get all the.
The term, cause the one of the eleven four eight, those are also due.
Oh.
For that section. For the nothing envelope section.
But okay, we're, we're taking, we're taking out, we're gonna say refer to.
Yes.
Yeah, like, I like it too, I don't like taking it, I like saying, since you refer to a zone.
Yep, yep.
Under, sorry, in eleven four seven, we have, uh, uh, hourglass effect less than fifty feet is currently seventy five feet is the minimum. Narrow is the minimum pinch point in a lot. So why would we go smaller?
Well, I know we've got frontage upset, you're talking about conservation subdivision?
No, 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 it's seventy five feet is the.
Back lot.
Oh, right.
Oh, yeah.
But and even if you look like some of the wonky design, like they have come in, you would never normally cut up a lot the way these are being cut up. And you look at them and, and what they do is they specifically dimension out like, oh, it's seventy five feet from here to here and it pinches and then goes back out, you know?
But it's just specific to the building envelope though, not the lock, it's the minimum.
That's right.
Because you wouldn't want to, say somebody has. Maybe, just, just say something in the corner, and it kind of flares out.
You like talking about an hourglass, so.
Like an hourglass figure versus.
Yeah.
Not a driveway into a back lot.
Yeah, this was created on the building.
This was not the back lot.
Well, I know, what's?
Back lot fifty.
Yeah, I get that.
Okay. Use the term hourglass, so that will be the shape of the lot. Back lot, I think we call the neck.
Very true.
Yeah, then we'd be in a, yeah, it's all.
Like, just, love your, but like.
Right, but that's a straight neck in.
Versus that.
I just was wondering, that's what you were thinking, the hourglass type block?
Yes.
Not a, not a driveway into a back lot.
Correct.
Which.
I guess how does that impact? I don't, I'm struggling then with how this impacts from a building envelope standpoint. Does it, what, what, how are we defining building envelope now becomes? The question I would ask, cause.
In our regulations so far, so.
No, but we have a mi- a minimum width, lot width.
Right. So, but that's the building envelope though, so the building envelope is fifty feet wide, but then you have your setbacks beyond that. So that effectively makes your. Your lot width. Depending where you are, maybe it's a hundred feet.
I'm just trying to visualize, bear with me, I'm, I'm slow and I want to make sure I understand it. That way I'm not being presented with something and I've got a certain individual sitting here, so it's like per your regulations, it's.
Another thing that should be of the.
Yeah.
Did you, would you just want to take this out? You just stepped to the, uh, so, I mean, this is probably subdivision, this is.
Well.
This probably was a.
I know, we already took one thing out to go to seven.
But this is, this is really more subdivision stuff.
Okay.
Yeah, this is when it's defined wash.
Right.
These broken down here.
Okay.
I know, it's life yet, but.
No, it's.
It's new stuff, but just, uh. We didn't have any discussion. I'm, I'm passing. Thinking about all this thing, that can't be tighter than fifty feet. Be setbacks. That's part of the building. So it has nothing to do with the lot.
Right.
What do you think?
I, I think it sounds good.
Yeah, you can still, if it's something kind of hourglass shape, doesn't need a solid. So if you make it fifty feet wide, you still have your setbacks beyond that.
Yeah.
Which effectively makes your, depending what.
Yeah, three feet on each side.
It could be a hundred ten feet wide.
Yep, right.
And then, you know, say you have minimum a hundred feet or two hundred feet, depending if it's conservation or whatever. Um, your lot still can have some kind of hourglass shape, but at least it's gonna be.
Lot pageant.
Hundred, yeah. Yeah, it, it could be a hundred feet.
Yeah.
The act of a lot itself could be a hundred feet.
That's, that's, that's.
Just say you're after laughing.
Fifty feet on the class five road to go into a back lot.
For a back lot.
Back on each side, yeah.
But what, what you're talking about here is a building.
If you have a perfectly square lot.
And have that.
Coming to play because of wetlands.
So this is. So that's fifty feet wide.
But it gets.
And you're adding your setbacks, your lot width now becomes a minimum of feet, depending whatever is on. And that, and it's.
So if I built a thirty foot wide building in here, trying to meet my setbacks, but I have a fifty foot building envelope, so I would theoretically have to have ten additional feet. On each side, which becomes deemed my building envelope and then I would have to meet my setbacks from that. Am I interpreting that correctly?
No, cause case your foot, you're, you can put a fifty foot wide building here, cause this is your building envelope. And then you're having setbacks beyond, beyond that.
Okay, okay, now I see what you're saying, like, I have to, my minimum width has to be fifty feet.
Yep.
For my building envelope.
Yeah, right.
Got it, like I said, I'm slow, sometimes I just need somebody to. To put it in front of me, I appreciate that, that's why I ask.
Always remember so.
Um.
Crash. We call Billy small. Prove you fast.
Okay.
Yeah. And we've got a subdivision, like in eleven.
Is this recent?
Yeah. Names of subdivisions and streets.
So, I just put it in there, um, like a, a selection. It's like.
Why did ever question these? It says street names must be approved by the, we're selecting, we already have approved list, should that be mentioned in here? Or from the approved list or something like that?
So there. A developer is not required, I mean, the list would be approved, like right now we're taking names, so everybody has new names.
I think ziggle names for the rest.
I mean, email me.
I have times better than.
Email your names. But there is an approved list, but the developer doesn't have to pick from the list, a lot of times they like to say, I just want to pick one, I just want to have to think about.
But he picks, it's meant to be approved with the voice level, right? If he picks a list that's already approved. Is that a?
Oh, right, cause the list is, will be approved by the board.
So as we're saying, the approved.
So the street name's not already on the approved list, must be approved by the select.
Right.
Or it's not be approved, or from the approved list or something like that.
Right.
Just to make it clear that there was an approved list on.
Yeah, so some people often should, they just realize there was a list.
Well. Report that language in there, actually, to clarify the reason.
They get the response.
They can, but the, that, that envelope, yeah, was with the select one. And I'd like to tell you, I found the conservation subdivision, minimum lot size requirements.
And what does it say?
It is under, well, it splits it out into two sections, it's, um. Minimum lot size for individual house slots and cluster groups. And there is table three, which are the dimensional standards for detached units on individual lots and the dimensional standards for single family lots. Which say that single family detached dwelling units may be placed on individual lots and conservation subdivision. Minimum lot size for a single family detached dwelling unit. Shall not be less than twenty thousand square feet. Subdivided.
Right, that's what John, so he went fifteen because that takes out your setbacks.
Right, and then, um, in here, it goes lot width, lot width. Uh, it gives you dimensional standards around that.
Yeah, seventy five on the street.
Yeah.
Twenty on the sides.
Right, which. Um, if we calculate it out, should. Maybe it meets the fifteen thousand, maybe it doesn't, it, I guess it would depend.
Yeah, I didn't actually calculate anything, but fifteen thousand sounded good.
So do we wanna refer to that? Sorry. What do you?
I, I probably would, I would just refer to.
Same thing that we did with the other one.
Yeah.
And delete it and refer to section blah, blah, blah.
Right. It is uh page twenty five. And it's six, six point two, it actually ranges from six point. Two point three um up to six point two point. Um. Really, it goes all the way to six point three. Cause they have perimeter buffers, there's all, there's all kinds of. New ounces in there. Which will dictate what the lot size actually could be.
Good. They're with names.
I do like the idea of setting a minimum, making sure that it has a minimum.
I agree.
Like.
Yeah, like thirty thousand.
I would, I'll get it, we'll get into that later.
Yeah, twelve point one, what's seven, felt that in here. Any more than twelve point eight. Ten, I'm just. Yeah, I do that.
It's uh surety of work.
Seven hundred and six.
Um. Rehooked it to eighteen. Five. I went over, what does that sound like?
Oh, yeah. Okay.
Well.
If they go faster.
So I have a. I have a, yeah, I agree, but question on the surety of work piece.
And.
It, knowing what we went through um. With um. By the golf course.
People.
Yeah, but.
Overlook.
Yeah, overlook and all of that. Um, ultimately, I believe we didn't end up keeping, like there, the surety of work component ended up. Backfiring to where we ended up having to give it all back anyway. Um, if I remember correctly on that. So.
But also the, you know, you put down the base coat one year, right?
Mm-hmm.
Go over a whole winter. Be the fall of the next year, the road portion, which is the big thing.
That's a component, it's a subbase becomes a bigger variable in there and, you know.
It's too short, you never even get to the finish.
Well, they move without the old regulations too, which. There's a part too, so that's probably a shared part of it.
Well, and there was also, like, there were core samples that showed the road didn't meet the standards, but then they tried making an argument that there was little to no movement in it and. So you. You ended up in a big legal hubbub. That really just spent a bunch of money and didn't accomplish it. This is where. Um, by one note that I had in here about that. Is there was a note about the select board, about a note saying that the planning board uh right here. Formal acceptance of uh dedication of the, the planning board. Shall is. Going back to eleven eleven three under the name subdivision. Um. It. Eleven eleven three, acceptance of formal offers and dedicated streets, public easements.
Yeah.
And parks, this is the approval of the planning board. Of the plan shall not be deemed to constitute or imply the acceptance by the board of selectmen or the town of any street right of way. Easement or park shown in said plan, it says the planning board may require. Said plan to be endorsed with appropriate notes. To this effect, I think it should say shall, the planning board shall require. Said plan to be endorsed, specifically noting on the plan that the select board does not have to accept that road. Cause if you have a road that is in contention. We should not be accepting it. As a public way that we are now on the hook as a municipality to maintain, cuz that impacts all of us as residents for a burden.
So that, that would need to be someplace else, cuz this second specifically naming your frozen streets.
Well, if you wanna address that issue, that should be some.
Well, the approval of the planning board of a plan shall not be deemed to constitute or imply the acceptance of the board.
What you're saying, acceptance of formal offers of dedication streets. Maybe that should be put somewhere else then, cuz. The official dedication.
Well, yeah, I was reading formal dedication.
Maybe.
Right, I was, formal dedication of street met, the town was taking possession of it, the way I read that.
Okay, they should just name.
Yeah. Okay, so.
Maybe we should.
With that in.
Eight.
With that, I, right. With your whole.
I think you should. Put that note on the plan.
Overlook. That's the name of it.
Right, right.
That once, that happened again. Uh.
I put in part of dedication.
Before we let it go, let it go. The last sentence, it.
Should that feel like.
I've had a lot.
Street na- which one?
I'll learn.
I know.
Shall.
May require. That plan to be endorsed with appropriate notes to this effect. May.
I, I feel like. Anytime you get into a may versus shall. Scenario.
Too much leeway.
Right, you, you're like, well, you don't have to require, but if you just require it, you do it as a shall, then they will put it on the plan and it's done.
Yeah.
And then. It, in fifteen years from now, you don't have a board sitting here going. Well, I'm looking at an old plan and I don't really know exactly what.
And even the she was. It's probably a way to, in a, in a sense where it's not, it's not appropriate.
Yeah, I don't think you'll find that, though, I think you'll, you'll just.
You know, shall is not absolute.
Right.
Don't be a quest, though, William. I think she'll. I'm, I'm with.
But, yeah, but I would like to see that. I, I would like to see that the part added in.
Show.
Please.
Yeah.
I sent it some form offers of name.
Uh.
Show.
I would like to see it, like as John talked and I were talking about, added in there that the planning, that the. Board, the select board does not have to, that the acceptance of a road is not a. Condition just because it's been. Like, or I don't know how you put it in there, but.
That I'm gonna say involved. If the town requires you to build the road to town's standards.
There's.
Subdivision.
But I don't believe there's any requirement the town has to actually accept responsibility for that road.
Yeah. Developer.
But does a judge look at that?
Well, if you hear the dump, you build, you build a road to, there's no requirement for the town to take that home. It can be homeless association, I mean, there's no requirement for.
Right.
The road.
Right.
So.
Okay.
All right. Yeah, you are the H T disruption. In spirit. I think. I'm sure you'll.
Did you hear that?
That I did.
Very long.
Stop and later on. I think.
Nobody had a shit. Um, note that you got highlighted. Um. Like you've got a page one of five, was that free? You and I had time about that twenty five percent, but you know, you said we were gonna.
Yeah, I was gonna talk to Bill and I've been managing that. So I still need to follow us again. And that just comes down to. Um. Books.
Basically.
Yeah, yep. Yeah, I guess I can pin you on it. And it's just coming down, how much? So am I missing something?
So like, I'm sorry. Um, the eighteen point five point four, and then page one of five, the bottom, there's. That is highlight is, um, sorry, that section is highlighted. And then the left twelve point eight point six eleven A is highlighted. And there was a percentage in there. It was um conflicting when I talked with the uh town officials that you want, you can match it, and then the twenty five percent would seem more appropriate. Um. And then from an engineer's point of view, they asked, well, why do we up it so much? Because that doesn't. That's not always, it's not necessary, right?
Well.
Or not necessarily, um.
Yeah, if the project is completed and we've completed. A. Site walk. Um, at, you know, I would call it substantial completion, now the project built, you know, grows and use the building houses. And it's in that one year warranty period, holding twenty five percent. Of the construction value. Is can be a large amount of money to hold for a year, just in case something happens. So typically on, on a construction project, that would get reduced. To, you know, ten percent or, or even lower than that. Where, where, we're working directly for the town, we would hold two percent retained during the one year period, during the one year warranty period. I would not recommend that here because on a construction project like Reno Road, for instance. You know, we have more control of the contract and, and measuring it and, you know, insurance policy working, like all that kind of stuff. On a development project. Um. Maybe ten percent is reasonable, twenty five percent is on the face of it, to me, just from my experience, seemed like a lot of money told for a year. Or potentially two years, depending how, um, depending how it goes out. Um, so I was. Gonna talk to Bill in our office, who has a lot of funding work experience, has been the planning board of Burlock, but he's had a lot more. Um. Uh, work with planning boards for towns and get his input on what he felt was reasonable to hold for the warranty period. If twenty five, twenty five percent appropriate than it is if it's sugar level then. Um.
For roads, but I mean, there could be wetlands, dumb market, you know, control features and stuff like that.
Yeah, it'd be for any, 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 any infrastructure, so if you roadway, uh.
Maybe. Well. You know, the concept, so.
Well. It would be, the subdivision's infrastructure, not well constructed. And the town has their purveyors. For the subdivision structure in itself.
Wouldn't it be a common infrastructure, though, like if you had, if you have a community well that provides.
Well, that, yeah. Then, that could potentially be different.
And it's still the state, though.
It's not.
But the state doesn't hold a percentage of it, they just issued the permit.
Correct. But they have to meet water quality standards.
Right, but say you.
Enforces me by the state, it'd be water quality.
Correct. And then they would have to comply with all the standards, whatever, whatever it's, or they couldn't distribute the water.
So we wouldn't.
We wouldn't have purview of that.
I'm just thinking about that they start, they put something in, it starts, everything goes well. Say you hit a drought and all of a sudden your wells are not producing. Where they would need to, or they're septic, they have a septic problem tied to that, like.
It, it sounds so, wouldn't it purview of that?
Yeah. Yeah, that now.
Nothing but.
Right, now it becomes your development association.
The well.
So, yeah.
So.
No, but we all know what happens, they come into the town, kind of like crying to the town about, hey, I've got this problem. Here we are.